I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission's regular meeting dated May 6, 2024. The meeting is being held both in a hybrid format and that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely on Zoom. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit a request to speak form to the clerk before the item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, if you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you when your turn has come to make sure the discussion is clear to the public. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
Here, good evening.
Commissioner Peake will be absent this evening. Commissioner Smith?
We're here.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Here.
Chair Mazza?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Craig, will you lead us in present positions?
All right. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I move the agenda as published.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
As a point of clarification, are you recommending continuance of item number 5A to the May 20th, 2024 regular planning commission meeting as part of that motion or not?
No.
Thank you. Chair Mazza?
Can we have a question?
Can we have a discussion before we call roll?
Yes.
Sure.
I'd like to amend that, to have that added, to the continuance added.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we call Drew's motion first.
Well, then let's have some discussion. Why? What reason? Why? I mean, it seems like we have everything in front of us that we could decide tonight.
I had a conversation on Sunday with the applicant's representative where they told me that they were planning on having this, requesting this continuance. I think the applicant was called out of the country. It's not in the United States right now.
Is the applicant representative here?
Lynn Hecox is available in the meeting. I do not see the owner at this time.
Okay, Lynn.
Speaker's slip.
Typically, we typically, we do not take public comment on the on the agenda.
Okay.
And so any, any, of course, the commission has the prerogative to ask the applicant's representative, but I would limit it just to factual specific questions to help dictate the agenda question.
Lynn, is there any, is there any information that we do not have at the present time for this item?
Mr. Chairman, you talking to me?
Yes, yeah.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I believe you have all the information. I know that several commissioners had questions about the staff report and the findings, and I tried to provide that information to all commissioners. And when I call commissioners and discuss a particular issue, I'm hoping that the commissioner would say to me, yes, I agree with that interpretation, or no, I don't agree with that interpretation. In this case, we only have five commissioners, excuse me, four commissioners, and several commissioners said, Lynn, I can't agree with you on your interpretation. We need to discuss the matter further. I'm not looking for yes votes. I just want people to understand the way I think and what I'm thinking about the project. Today, I could not get two members of the commission to agree with my interpretations, and so my decision was to postpone the matter to the next available hearing.
Okay.
Like five votes at that time. I'm not looking for yes votes.
Okay, Lynn, that's that's enough to know. We have a question from Mr. Leonard. Commissioner Leonard, Vice Chair Leonard, I'm sorry.
Hi, Lynn. Is, as you mentioned to me, the applicant is not in the country, correct?
That's for Lynn.
Mr. Hecox?
Yes, my mute button came on.
Oh, okay.
Yep, the owner of the property is out of the country. He's down in Mexico.
Okay. Now, the reason I'm doing, I'm making this motion before we vote is, we have all the information in front of us. It's a very simple item, and I can understand when we need to hear additional information, and we have not informed on it. Commissioners are not allowed to make decisions on the phone out of a meeting. So polling commissioners and was essentially as forum shopping by moving the meeting to get certain commissioners in the meeting is not appropriate. In my opinion, it costs the city quite a bit of money to go through the whole series again. We have staff here that can explain any questions commissioners have, so I'm going to keep my motion. Does anybody else have a question?
I have a comment.
Craig first? Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't get a chance to follow. I also wanted to ask staff in regards to what normal protocol is in this situation.
In the past, I would say it's been the city's practice to accept at least one continuance, whether that be for an appeal or a regular hearing item. However, it is ultimately up to the discretion of the body that will be hearing the item.
And then just one thing to add, Mr. Chair, echoing that, there's not really any set policies or written guidelines on what is a, you know, appropriate reason for the continuance. So it is ultimately up to up to the discretion of the Planning Commission.
Correct. So the Planning Commission can vote on their own agenda?
Of course.
Okay. Craig?
Yeah, a couple of things. Having met with the applicants on site and seeing the project and knowing something of the track record of this.
Excuse me, we don't want to discuss.
I'm not discussing substance, not discussing substance, but just saying, and given the track record of this commission, I would expect it's very likely that we'd get something passed tonight. Secondly, and more importantly, maybe, yes, we do give continuances. I think that happens when there's a reason that's like, you know, somebody had something pre-scheduled or they had an emergency or something. In this case, I'm a little more uncomfortable because they expressly said, we're forum shopping, as John put it, that they're saying, you know, well, we just want to come in and get a different body of the commission. So I'm just wondering, is that a distinction as opposed to just saying, we can't make it for good cause versus we're just shopping around?
Right. So the the term forum shopping would indicate that there's going to be
We're putting it in quotes.
Right, some other body or commission for which they're going to get this heard. It's going nowhere. You guys are the planning commission. Of course, it's not lost on me that your fifth member is not here. So the idea of forum shopping, I'm not sure I would use that exact term. However, going back to Director Malakas, in the past, I can't recall my office or staff ever kind of weighing the merits of a continuance request, i.e. if someone reaches up to staff at noon today saying, I'm requesting a continuance, we do not say, well, you give us our reasons because, no, of course, there's always the back and forth of, hey, is there something we can do? It's a crowded agenda. It's not a crowded agenda. So it's a case-by-case basis, but we as staff do not weigh the merits. It's up to you all.
Well, and speaking of crowded agenda, how, what does the 20th look like? Because we're doing the TUP, the Tranqus TUP that night. Is that still on the plan or?
We got an email that was canceled.
I can bring up.
Entirely?
I can bring up the meeting long range if you'd like me to, but we do definitely have room for another hearing that.
I mean, I just feel like, it feels like we're so close on this one now. If it would cause, and if there's any potential to cause problems at the next meeting and end up bumping somebody else, then why not just do it now?
I don't foresee a bump of another project as being part of the considerations for whether or not you continue this item.
Even with how slowly we tend to get through things sometimes?
It is, the next meeting is, I would say, one of your lighter meetings at this point.
I have one more thing I'd like to say.
Okay, so, yes?
If the owner has directed Mr. Hecox to continue it, just continue it. It's just a continuance. Who cares?
Okay, we can, that's, everybody have their comments in? And we can always continue it when we hear it. Okay, can we have a, can we have a roll call?
Actually, I do have my one last.
Mike, Mike.
Commissioner Mazza, you brought up that it's costing the city money for this hearing. I just want to put on record that the applicants are paying fees all across the board. They've invested a lot of money in this project, and they're, they're not wasting resources. They are paying for resources, and we are here to try to serve our constituents.
I have a practical thought.
Go ahead.
It seems like if we could hear it tonight, very likely pass it. If not, then we're very likely getting it two and two, in which case, in which case, we continue it at that point anyway. So why not try to, try to do it?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's go on and take the vote. The, the, now, cost is, I just want to have one last thought. This costs money. It's not paid for by the applicant.
They pay for everything.
Nope. Not when you add extras, upside extras. Okay, so we have a vote?
But so I just, I just want to clarify. So the original motion made by Chair, seconded by Commissioner Hill, is the agenda as, as it appears on the website. I believe, Vice Chair Leonard, you had a substitute motion for that same thing. Sands, item 5A, would instead continue that to May 20th, which was seconded by Commissioner Smith, and we will take Vice Chair's motion first.
Correct.
Correct. So Vice Chair Leonard?
So.
This is on your motion.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Sorry, was that me?
It is. Commissioner Hill?
No.
And Chair Mazza?
No.
Motion fails. So now we will have a roll call on the original motion. Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
I can't believe we're fighting over a continuance. Just for the sake of where this is hours and you talk about wasting money. Chair, I'm going to vote. We'll talk about it. Yes.
And Vice Chair Leonard?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. Can we have a report on posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 26, 2024.
Okay, there are no ceremonial presentations. Do we have communications with the public? None? Did somebody?
We have, Lynn Hecox's hand is raised in the meeting.
But that might be left over from.
We do not.
Okay, and anybody in the, anybody in the audience? No speaker slips, right?
Lynn's hand is still up, but that could be left over from the previous discussion.
But Chair, since it is up, we should call on him in case he wants to.
Lynn, this is something other than on the agenda. Can you make a comment?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Would you ask me the question again, please?
We're now on public comment for items that are not on the agenda. You had your hand up. Do you want to speak on item 2A?
No, I don't.
Okay, so we're closing the public comments and opening up for Commissioner comments.
I've got a couple if no one else does.
Okay, you're on.
All right. I opened up the Malibu Times last week to discover that apparently I had written a Dear Editor letter, which was a surprise to me. Actually, I had written some email to council and copied a few people, including the Malibu Times, on the, and so I thought we were having an email discussion. And that's all right. The one slightly weird, slightly unfortunate thing is that our email dialogue continued well beyond my initial note to council, and none of that was reported. And so just for the record and for clarity, we were talking about large trucks being banned on PCH. And what came up after the letter is a clarification that the restriction is on trucks of more than three axles, not 22 wheels, as one council member thought, and that I thought that it went all the way up to Las Poses Road, but it only goes up to Decker Canyon, which is weird because I don't know how a big trailer truck would suddenly decide it wants to go up Decker. But I guess that's, that has to do with the LA versus Ventura County thing. So, and part of that changed, several other people noticed that they too have seen increased sightings of trailer trucks on the highway. So I don't know if council has conferred with law enforcement on the enforcement of that and whether any other measures might be needed. But after my other comment, I'm wondering if staff has any update on how we're, if we're handling trucks on the highway any differently now, including the ones that park on the center median. My second question, there was, the SB 9 duplex housing bill was in the news last week. There was a court case where a judge in LA County, Judge Kinn, said that in effect, SB 9 was unconstitutional. It was an overreach on the government's part because to have affordable housing, to be promoting affordable housing, you had to actually be creating it actually. And he said, the quote is, "The legislature cannot rely on a potential eventual decrease in prices resulting from increased housing supply" to demonstrate that SB 9 would increase the supply of affordable, i.e. below market rate housing. So that ruling applied to the five charter cities that brought the action, including Redondo and Del Mar coastal cities. Some have speculated that would apply only to charter cities, but I don't see that that rationale would be any different in general, a lot of cities like Malibu. So I'm just wondering where, if we can have an update or a reminder where the city stands on SB 9, whether we still think that might affect us, whether we think this new ruling might in fact end up shooting it out of the water, or are we going to be expecting duplexes on every lot sometime in the coming years? So, right, so question one for staff, what about the trucks on the highway? And question two, where are we at on SB 9 right now?
Do you want to, do you want to answer? Those will go on, while they're fresh?
Very good, Chair. Yes, I'll tackle the first one, and then I'll pass it along to our Assistant City Attorney. The city's Public Safety Department has been looking into the issue with the trucks, and I believe coordinating with the Sheriff's Department. And so I believe that is something that will be discussed at the city council level.
Thank you.
And so as it pertains to the SB 9 lawsuit in Judge Kinn's court, Commissioner Hill, you are correct that, you know, the lawsuit only involved charter cities. Whether or not the same logic applies is likely going to be a question for another court. And so I can't sit here and tell you that those arguments have no merit. I can't sit here and tell you, though, it is that a local Superior Court's ruling in this case is not necessarily dispositive as we sit here today for the, for the, for the city of Malibu. So we'll see where it goes. These, these housing laws are brand new, and they're, they're always in flux. But as of right now, in my opinion, that, that case has limited practical impact as of right now. The logic may be extended, and other cities may, may pursue a challenge. But as of right now, that really doesn't change much as it pertains to the city.
Well, apart from the recent case, can you informally remind us or update us on what the city thinks the law may or may not? Because I've heard like, oh, it doesn't apply in high fire hazard severity zones, and but I don't know that that's true either. So I'm a little confused.
Can I short circuit that a little? Has this law passed? As I understand it, it hasn't passed.
It was signed.
No, so Senate Bill 9 has been signed and is, is, you know, appears in the, in the state codes. And Commissioner Hill, as it, you know, that, that conversation about when and how it applies in the city, it's, it's kind of difficult for me just to kind of freewheel right now and say, hey, no, we're not going to approve it here. We will approve it over here, only because it is such a case-by-case basis. There is some language in SB 9 dealing with, with high fires, but it's not as crystal cut as, hey, if you're there, you know, there's, there's some more fact analysis. I, you know, should you want some more information, you know, I can, I can probably provide a bit more of a, of a, of a complete picture at a future meeting. As I said before, I'm a bit reluctant to opine on it just kind of on the fly here without a, without anything before me, because as I said, I, you know, I don't want to say the wrong thing. And, and our director here is now dealing with the fallout in a couple of months when someone says, well, Donegan said this.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just, I guess I felt very confused about where the city's at on it, and I guess I'm getting that it's, it's still very much up in the air.
Just a quick question on that, and then we'll go on. Can we become a charter city?
I mean, that, that process is likely long and drawn out, but, but yeah, to my knowledge, nothing prohibits the city of Malibu from, from doing that.
Any other comments?
I agree with Commissioner Hill, the bottom dumps. We shouldn't have anything like that going through town. It's bad. And, you know, the hydraulics go out on them, and then everything comes out the bottom of the truck and then into the car behind it. So we're two or three cars. So, yeah, I've never been a big fan. I was, I was told when I was working on Tuna Canyon that make sure, Mr. George told me that, make sure you don't have any bottom dumps coming off that hill. And so I've kind of always followed that, and I don't, I just don't think they belong here. They can, they can go around us. They don't like it, but they can do that.
Do we have anything?
Nothing more to add.
Okay. First question is, what is the situation on the TUP hearing? Because we wanted to, we, the planning commission, as I remember, asked the city, asked staff to delay our hearings until after the city council hearings. And so I just want to kind of get some idea of when it's going to happen, because summer's here.
Certainly. I was actually going to bring that up under Director's comments. The TUP hearing was supposed to take place next week at city council. However, it has been postponed, and it's set now for the first meeting in June. We'll be distributing the report. I hope that it doesn't move again, but it, it has been postponed to that date. And I wanted to mention this because a few meetings ago, I want to say, the commission had asked that we, staff, bring forward the Tranqus Market project, but you had done that with the date of the 13th of May as the TUP hearing. So one, just wanted to update the, the planning commission on that. And then from there, when the chair is ready, I'll give the rest of my comments.
Okay. Question, just one question on that is, has Tranqus applied for any TUPs in 32 days from now for, for banned bands and things like that?
You are today?
Pardon me?
At this time, they have not yet applied for any TUPs for any of the summer concert series or any other events.
Okay, hopefully somebody reminds them. The second question is, I made the mistake coming down here on a Saturday, and it's not even summer yet, and I couldn't find a parking spot. Now, so my question is, I assume the COVID restrictions or the COVID, you can park on parking, you can serve food on parking spots, has expired. So what is the situation with the restaurants using the parking spaces for business?
Two restaurants have applied for CUP amendments, and they're going through the permitting process. There is another restaurant that would like to apply. However, we don't believe that their application would be approvable, so we're advising them just to take out the seating rather than going through a long, drawn-out process. But the, the practice, if you would, that was presented as a solution, when this came up at the city council level, was to send letters out, and we had done that to all of the, I want to say it was about 16 or 17 restaurants that had applied and explained to them that they either had to remove it or attempt to permit it. And if they attempted to permit it while we were going through the process, they could maintain what they have. As I mentioned, there's only two restaurants that are currently going through the process. They're pretty much at separate ends of the city, or one's in the middle and one's at the far end. But the others, we've so far found one violation, and if anybody else is doing it, most likely they are doing it without permits from the city.
Well, if, if there's only one in, in the central city, there's two restaurants and one shopping center doing it. So somebody ought to drive around sometime and take a look. Okay, this, so that's that. Okay, so any other comments? Richard, you're on for anything else you want to say.
Can I, can I just say, ask one thing? You kind of brought up a good spot thing there. Sorry, Director. So what happens with La Paz, which it's, it's got obviously the ranch name to it now, and I can't think of it just for the moment. But what's going to happen when the world figures out La Paz? And you got, you know, those 9,000 parking spaces down below, and people start parking there, and they just go in there and park, and then they walk over here across the beach, not that far. And then I have the same problem at Tranqus as the director, as Chair was saying. They don't stop anybody from parking in that parking lot and going across the street to the beach, to Zuma. And I get my mail there, and I can't, a lot of times, you can't even park to get your mail. So I just, you know, we're scrambling for parking places naturally, but I, that doesn't have anything to do with us, of course. But I'm just saying, agreeing with the Chair here real quick. But what about La Paz, though? Are they, when people figure out you can park down there, and maybe you're going to go get something to eat or whatever, but you've grabbed all your gear, and you're high-tailing out of that subterranean parking lot across the street? tailing out of that subterranean parking lot across the street? Is that, is that going to be okay? Or what's the scoop on that, sir?
I don't believe there's any requirements as part of that project that they provide public parking, because sometimes Coastal Commission will ask that as part of the amenities of a commercial center, they provide it. I will have to look to see if there were any conditions put on the application about them policing their parking and making sure. I don't think there were. And the owner has not made us aware of any plans, like, for example, some owners I know during the peak season, they will have their security guards monitor the parking in the lot to try to enforce it, that it's for folks visiting the center or shopping in the area, but not utilizing it as additional beach parking, which then prevents other visitors from using it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Just a comment. I asked the owner when we reviewed those restaurants. He's concerned about that. He's also concerned about the employees of other shopping centers parking there. And he's also concerned about another shopping center that isn't isn't controlled at all, which I don't think we have, we want to bother dealing with Surf Canyon right now. But there are, the real key is, we need parking. And just an opinion of mine, I've owned five restaurants. Restaurants are valued on the number of seats. Okay? When you give a guy an extra 40 seats, you're giving him a half a million bucks minimum, okay, for free. Okay, where are we?
Chair, if I may finish with Director's comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
No worries. I believe your finish was yours.
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to give a quick update to the Planning Commission this evening on some things in the Planning Department that are some changes and some additions. If I may have the next slide, please. So just want to reiterate that the city launched the Development Portal on the April 22nd, and this was a joint effort by the Planning Department and also the Environmental Services Department. The purpose of this portal was to try to address that question we received from the residents of where is my project or what is going on with a with a particular project? So applicants and owners, they will have access to their individual projects, real time updates. They'll be able to see revisions from the various departments that are reviewing it. They'll see the related documents. So we did tie this into OnBase, so it will work on public records request. You see the the bottom, the last item there, all the way on on your right hand side, talks about public documents. So we're making those more accessible. And the whole purpose of this is it's set up in such a fashion that if somebody were to be applying for a project, you would start at the top left and you can work your way through to the point of building inspections. So we'll continue to work on this and develop it and grow it. But this was something designed to increase the transparency that was requested to the city by its residents. If I may have the next slide, please. And then also some other updates for you in the Planning Department. In an effort to improve customer service, we are going to continue to maintain our regular public counter hours. But on the more busier days, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we'll be be able to do, give a bit more in-depth service with planning consultations. And what we're going to have is more of our senior level staff available at the counter those days. So in addition to the counter tech, you would have a more senior level person there. And once again, Tuesdays and Thursdays were picked because at this time, those are our most crowded days and we see the most volume of folks. I want to be efficient with the staff. As we'll get into it in staff recruitment, we do have eight vacancies in the department, so I am trying to be smart about that. With code enforcement, I wanted to let the public know and the Planning Commission that at this time, and we may ramp it up come summer, but we were able to kind of maneuver some schedules around and we have code enforcement officers two weekends a month right now in the city. In addition, I have the city's code enforcement manager monitoring the city code enforcement hotline. And I'm sorry, I don't have the extension in front of me. But if anybody calls either the code enforcement manager or the hotline that we have for code enforcement, then what they will be able to do is leave a message and that message is being checked on the weekends. Same with the email. It's also being checked on the weekends by our code enforcement manager. And depending on the need, if we have to get a guy out here, we will do that, or we can also contact the Sheriff's Department. Onto staff recruitment. As of the 22nd of last month, the department had eight vacancies. These range in a range of admin as well as planning staff. We do have vacant planning positions. We are currently working through the applications that were submitted to us for the planning intern position, the assistant planner position, and also for the associate planner position. So we're going through those. And we just recently promoted one of our administrative folks, Gail Duncan. We've moved her up to administrative assistant today. So congratulations for Gail. She's sitting over there taking the public speaker requests. Also, we have hired another administrative assistant to work in our code enforcement division. Her name is Carol Meyer and she'll be starting the end of this month. And so that person, her task will be to help with the tracking and acceptance of short term rental permits and then also with helping the management of our city's caseload. We got about 600 to 700 open code enforcement cases, which right now, we're almost at a one to one, open one and close one within a month. But I need to get my guys to be closing three a month if they open one in order to get through this backlog. But we have another administrative person coming in to help with that division. Folks, when they call and file a verbal complaint, they will most likely end up getting Carol on the phone. And then lastly, I'd like to congratulate Patricia Salazar. Today was her 22nd anniversary with the city of Malibu. She's basically getting up there to be one of the most senior employees with the city. So we, there's not many more in the city above her. And just want to encourage members of the public to visit malabucity.org/planing for any new information in the efforts to streamline the development process and our customer services. So we'll be continuing to look at that and see what we can do to try to make for a smoother process. Thank you.
True. We all forgot to congratulate Yolanda. Can you kind of remind all of us what the award that she won?
Certainly. So at the City Council meeting last Wednesday, it was announced that the city's Building Department essentially won, and I'm sorry, I'm going to mess up the name here because I don't have it in front of me, but it was essentially Building Department of the Year for the state of California. So it is a large title and a pretty good accomplishment for the city. I don't believe we've ever won anything like that before. And that was just recently announced. So we want to congratulate our ESD folks because that is a very big accomplishment.
Okay, question, Craig?
Follow up for Richard, two things. The city code is now on a different website. Is that part of the restructuring of the portal system? And does the new company that's providing the code, I've only just used that briefly, does it provide any different or other services that we weren't getting on the previous one? Different search functions or, I don't know?
So yes, we are now in Code 360, if I'm saying that correct? That was something that was, I believe, done by the city clerk's office. It's separate from the city's Development Portal. And it, from what I have been able to tell, its search functions are are different. It has a whole different look to it. But the other option that I've noticed is that it does provide for very easy use and access to code updates and kind of puts a little bit more of the historical context. And it is something that I think is the start of trying to get to a code that's more easily accessed and one that, once again, its searchability is a bit better. Because our last code, when you searched it, it necessarily, not, from the planning perspective, it did not necessarily search both the LCP and the MMC at the same time. This one will do that. And it also seems that this one is a bit more broader in its search, whereas our previous one, you had to have the exact term in there in order to find what you were wanting. So, for example, if you did not know the 100% was spelled out versus just 100, you had to know that it was either, if it was numbers, you had to know it was 100 with a space percent or 100 with the symbol of percent or the word percent. So this seems to search a bit better.
That's great to hear, actually, because often you do sort of wonder, was that in the MMC or the, you know? And then, secondly, for code enforcement, is there a specific hotline or do you just mean their extension number on the city's phone number? Because their their extension number is 484.
It's the 484 extension. That's what we refer to as our planning, or code enforcement hotline. That's a generic mailbox. And our code enforcement manager, Doug Clevenger, is checking it on weekends.
So for the public, the code enforcement is 310-456-2489 by 484.
If you have a pencil. Is it going to be on the city announcement on the switchboard on the weekends? Like, right now, it says, if this is an emergency, call a sheriff. Can it say, if this is a code enforcement issue, dial 48, whatever it is?
Yes, we can, we could look at putting a blurb in the city manager update. We can suggest that. I don't want folks calling us for emergencies because ideally, that's that's the sheriff. But if you see your neighbor or you observe something on the weekend taking place, it would be advisable, yes, call that number so that we, one, get it documented and then Doug can, our Doug Clevenger, can have an opportunity to get some follow up to it. If it's on one of the weekends, we have staff in the city, then we, of course, will route staff to it.
You know, I was just wondering, when, if somebody calls the city on Saturday, will it say on the, on this city answering service, if this is a compliance issue, dial 48, whatever it is? Because people don't, you know, you've got 9,000 people here and maybe five know how to do it.
What I can do is I can look into that. I am not privy to all that takes place, how much that system can do or how far we can modify it, but I can ask.
Okay, now, I have a couple of questions. On code enforcement, you say every other weekend, there'll be somebody around. Is that daylight hours? Is that working hours? Is anybody at night? If there's a, for example, dark skies complaint, is there anybody going to be at night ever or et cetera? Because I'm getting all kinds of calls now on dark skies.
Our code enforcement manager has varied the hours depending on what it is we're looking for. If it's a holiday weekend, for example, where there could be a lot of parties that evening, then we will shift our coverage towards the evening.
Okay.
And on dark skies, one thing to keep in mind is that dark skies, if we receive a complaint, it it's easy for us to follow up in the daylight hours as well because we look at the light fixtures. And it's usually, it's been our experience that it's been obvious if a light fixture complies or not. In fact, the case I was dealing with today, the complaint came in, it was an evening hours complaint, but it was obvious when we got out there today that the lights weren't shielded properly, so those were going to be the offending lights.
Okay. The new, I want to comment on the new code portal. I got in that trying to figure something out today and got totally lost, so I'll figure it out. But the new portal, your your planning portal, it says it's, is it accessible by the public or is it only applicants that can get into there and see what's going on? Because when you first start out, you said develop applicants and somebody else and staff or somebody can use it.
We cannot, there's certain information, like personal contact information, that we obviously can't just share publicly. However, the part of the the purpose of the portal is to allow folks to see the materials submitted with an application. And so we do have a link in there to make it function with OnBase so that the materials that are public record, folks can see. We're going to continue to update it. One of the the goals that I have Patricia working on right now is actually a way for wireless applications to be visible. So that where a wireless application comes in and it's submitted, there's a way to notify interested parties and our, that's, this is what we're trying to do. The goal is to set it up so that it notifies interested parties and then also would give those folks access to the submittal documents so that they could essentially start looking at it that afternoon as soon as we have it, as soon as it's uploaded, so that there's not a delay. So, yes, it it functions with OnBase and the goal is to let folks be able to see the materials that have been applied for.
So if somebody sees a bunch of story polls going up next door and they type in the address, do they go to OnBase or do they go into this to find out what's happening?
It was explained to me that if you, this ties into OnBase, so it would take you there to look if you write. There should be a green sign in front of that property with story polls with an address. Have a green sign with an address and a CDP and then you would use that to basically, I hate to call it a self-service public records request, but it's a way for you to go in there and look at the documents.
But do you go into this new portal or do you go into OnBase?
It's.
Or is it self-evident?
You would want to click on the public records, which would, as I mentioned, is the bottom left, bottom right, I'm sorry.
Of this portal?
Correct.
Okay.
OnBase is one of the links on the portal.
Right, yeah, and just want to know where you start. Okay, no more comments? Oh, yes.
Director, appeals. How quick are these getting turned? I know, I know you're busy and you don't have anybody, but I'm just asking because it seems like people are getting farther and farther out and we're not being able to get to them as quick as I guess we used to be able to do it. So I'm just, got to check with you.
It is taking us, and I will say, a couple of months. And there's a number of factors. So, yes, we are basically down by a third on our staff, but staff is doing a good job of turning them around in a timely manner. However, the catch is that it's, we have to write them, they go to the city attorney's office for review. That does take a few weeks. And then the next hurdle is finding a calendar date. And I, I say that because the City Council, they, everything goes to them. In this body, we just deal with development. So one of the catches is getting the appeal onto the City Council calendar and they do have, you know, a number of business items. So we have to be cognizant of that. And at at present, we try to do no more than one appeal per hearing. But it is taking us a few months and I will say, I think that we have a couple scheduled for this summer, which will hopefully catch us up.
Thank you.
Okay, one more question. Is it appropriate for the Planning Commission to ask for, like, I heard this one presentation by one of Don Schmitz's workers that there are over 243 days between to get an appeal heard? Is that, and how many projects are on the list?
Rebecca can get us an exact count and that's what she's doing. Now, some of those delays that our friends at Schmitz brought up have to do with continuances. Their items, I can think of two of their items and to keep in mind is that, for example, their doom drive appeal, that was constantly rescheduled and it wasn't the fault of Schmitz and it wasn't the fault of staff or the City Council. It was, we needed to conduct a primary view determination. So sometimes, and we were having a hard time actually getting access to the property. So sometimes these appeals do take a while, but it is because, in some cases, the appellant, because we aren't, the only kind of new information at this time that staff is taking from the applicant is just clarification materials. But there could be a number of factors to get to that average.
It'd be good for the public to know how big of a backlog there is, though.
At this time, we have seven appeals pending hearings with City Council. Of those, I believe four of them have tentative dates for City Council agendas, but those dates are very tentative based on other items which are, have citywide impact. are very tentative, based on other items which are, have citywide impact, potentially losing their tentative date and pushing over, and then pushing our appeals off to a future meeting date.
That doesn't sound that bad. And, you know, I was thinking, there are a hundred of projects out there that are, it's good, thank you for clarifying that. It really makes it sound a little less benign.
I will say that, I think our, we do have some that are pushing to about a year out from their original hearing with the planning commission.
And how many of those projects were actually approved by the planning commission that are being appealed?
I believe these all, except for one.
All of them were approved by the planning commission?
Except for one.
Wow.
That's about the ratio of approvals. Okay, it's not unusual. Okay, we're now on the consent item. Do we have any items to be pulled? Is there any, any slips from the public?
There are no slips from the public in person.
There's no raised hands.
Okay, I'm going to pull three B one for a question. Nobody else? Okay, it's a very quick question.
Do you want, do you want to adopt the?
Okay, I make a motion to receive and file the other consent items, except, okay. And then we have to take a vote on the minutes, so I make a motion, we approve the minutes. So first, we'll do the consent. Anybody object? Is it consented unanimously? Nobody opposed? Okay. Can we take a motion, a vote on the minutes?
May I have a second for your motion, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Chair Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice, I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the quick question on three B one is, the excuse, or the reason for the extension in their letter, is that they, they, it was too rainy, they couldn't grade. And my question is, it was, the rainy season is when you can't grade. So is that a valid excuse? That's what I'm asking, Richard.
Go ahead, you can try.
I don't disagree with you, Chair. You're correct, there is a seasonal restriction on grading. I have a feeling these folks were hoping that it would be a dry season, and they could get some sort of exemption request processed. But you are correct, this is typically our, our winter season. However, the code does not exactly, it just lays out due cause, some, some sort of issue that the owner has to deal with. And so that is their reason. However, you know, the one item I can say here of why it's before you is that it is consistent with the policy of the city council, considering the renewal, the extension, I should say, of permits, and it falls within their timeline.
Okay, I'm, do we have consent to approve that item?
Hang on, Chair, we just want to make sure, we have no hands raised, correct? Parker, pulling that one.
No, there's no raised hands.
Thank you, and no speaker slips, thank you.
Okay, do we have consent on that item?
I'm just
Because there is a resolution, I would also love to get a first and second.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Correct, yeah, because there's a resolution, you guys either need to vote to approve it, or, so it's a formal action.
Oh, it is, okay, so.
So just to tighten up John's observation, it's still not clear to me, their only due cause, in quotes, for the extension was, quote, exceptional weather conditions. And if that happens, like, if, so it seems like, I mean, I'm happy to give them an extension, but we don't really have the due cause listed for us, right? So how do we handle this?
We don't need a due cause, it's an extension. These guy, everybody gets one. You get a year, or you get two years. There's no reason to fight about an extension.
No, I want to give it to them, but it says you do need due cause, so what do we, how do we call that here?
Because they want it.
Because that's not what they get.
Rebecca's got
Okay. You have to have due cause, okay?
They gave it to us.
I'm not sure how detailed their letter of application for the extension was in regards to this, but in my informal conversations with the applicant, they expressed that it took them longer to move through the building plan check phase than anticipated. They had hoped to move through that phase in time to commence grading. Prior to the rainy season, they didn't get to the point where they could pull permits until the rainy season was upon us.
Okay, well, all I, and do you want to speak? No, okay.
So the due cause would be that the city planning process is slow?
I would say that the, that they, Chair, if you don't mind, that the due cause, as I'm sure you're aware, there's not a specific definition in the code. It is up to you for tonight to ascertain whether or not. And so, looking to us to say, this is the due cause for which we are, you know, which you guys need to base it, it's really a decision for you all.
I have a question for Richard, and I'm not opposed to this project, okay, but we have a interpretation sheet that says what due cause is correct, that we usually get on these. Says, you know, you have an illness, or you're economic, whatever it is. And I would just request that, that we follow this. At least we get the applicant to put down something that is in our policy.
I can read it right here.
Yeah.
I have the sheet, do you want to hear the whole thing?
Well, I don't read the whole thing. Does it say anything about the weather?
No. It's extraordinary circumstances beyond the applicant's control.
Okay.
So I don't know if the weather was extraordinary.
So I would just like the staff
This is a rainy weather.
Yeah. But I would like the staff to actually look at that sheet when they send us a letter and ask the applicant to make it fit the, the policy. Drew?
I would suggest, if this is going to be an issue going forward, that we should make it, make sure that the applicants understand that what is required for them to request an extension.
They have a policy sheet that we get, and just so you know, this is not the first time. We had somebody apply for a three-year extension, because they wanted to go live with their grandchildren for three years. Okay, and we said, eh, not, not quite, cut it, okay? That's why the staff came up with a set of reasons why it's reasonable for us to approve extensions.
Can I ask, Rebecca, one of the reasons is if a necessary, tell us if this is, comports with your communications, if there was, if a necessary restrict, necessary agency approval had not been obtained despite diligent efforts?
I would say that that would fall under their argument.
Okay, so maybe that's the
All I'm saying is, when we review something, and we vote on it, we should follow the code and the interpretations by staff that are accepted by us. And so please, send us letters that we can vote on. Okay?
Chair.
I, yes?
So for ten and a half years, I sat next to Mr. Haney, and I listened to some ridiculous excuses that came out of this commission about why people shouldn't be able to have extensions. Why does it matter? Nobody cares if it's an extension, it's on them. So if they can't do it right then, they'll, this, hopefully, they're listening to me, and it forces them to give them some kind of a reason to do this, because it doesn't hurt anybody to have an extension. They can get one, they get two years if they need it, and then they can come back and get one more. We all know that, that there's been other people that have had multiple extensions over the years. I sat next to Mr. Haney and watched that happen, too. But my point is, we're fighting over an extension. We're talking about it. There's nothing to talk about.
We're not fighting over it, and for 16 years, you sat there and slept, because you didn't realize, you did not realize, that there is a, there's such a thing called an LIP in a municipal code, and it is right in there. You get X amount of time, and you must ask for an extension, and have an excuse. It's in the code. So it's not a problem with any process we have when we follow the code. It's a process, it's a problem when we have the attitude that, gee, why do we care? Okay?
It's, it's about staff resources. You know, we want to get these things in the door.
And we did it because we had one extension that went 16 years, okay?
And I know which one you're talking about.
So
They paid, they paid a fee to
Mike, Mike.
They paid a fee to request this extension. You know, as I said
And Drew, everybody who applies for a house pays a fee. If they apply for a house, for a 50,000 square foot house, do they get it? They give you a reason why they qualify under the code. That's all we're asking here is, when you ask for an extension, you follow the process. That's all.
Okay. I, I get that part, but I understand that, you know, there's people that have loan issues, there's, there's lots of issues that
And they say, if they state them, we have, we've, we've accepted them, but it's going to rain, and I can't grade when it's raining, when I'm not supposed to grade anyway.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd make to put, change the condition here, that the extension is based on the guidelines, that in this case, a necessary agency approval has not been obtained despite diligent efforts.
Well, we're gonna, okay, so that's your reason to vote for it?
Well.
Okay, fine.
I'm saying, that's my motion, is to say, that's a legitimate reason, rather than saying it's the weather.
My only, I am going to second that, and we're going to vote on it, because my only point here was, please send us stuff that will
Chair, if I may, that policy that we have is just that, it's a policy. There's not a certain list of criteria you have to meet, in terms of what is due cause. It just says such as.
Right.
So I understand the concern of the commission, but I just once again ask that we be polite towards staff, because it's not something that says you have to pick one of these five boxes. It's such as. So want to keep that in mind.
And then, and then just to, the, the resolution, as of right now, doesn't, you know, it doesn't posit the following facts and circumstances constitute due cause. So your, your, your motion, is that something that you want included in the actual resolution, or just for the minutes and record tonight? Does that question make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, it does, but that's up to Craig. He made the
Correct, yeah, that's, that's, sorry, Vice Chair, I mean, sorry, Chair.
Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's your call, what the effect of that would be. I don't, I don't know that it matters to the applicant, but, but it matters to future precedent for us.
As far as I'm concerned, you're, you're saying that this is not a future precedent, if we don't put that in there.
Correct.
Okay, so let's leave it out, and let's vote. Can you amend your motion?
Sure.
Okay. I'll accept the amendment, or you accept my amendment?
For the record, it's not a precedent.
Okay. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice, I'm sorry, Chair Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Can you explain to me one more time, is this just not a good old-fashioned extension, and we're just going to extend it, or is there something in there I just missed?
At the moment, the motion would be staff's recommendation, which would grant a one-year time extension for the existing approved resolution.
Great, thank you, yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we are now off to item five A. Let me get the, get it so I can read it. I wish I had my binder. Where's the little blue paper? There it is.
What?
Okay, this is, this is item five A, coastal development permit number, permit Woolsey Fire Number twenty-two dash zero zero one, an application for conversion of an existing accessory structure studio to a second unit, and construction of a new swimming pool, spa and associated pool equipment, onsite wastewater treatment, and other site improvements. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Tyler Eaton here, presenting for the case planner Akash Shaw. This is the CDPF twenty-two oh one, located at three one eight four seven PCH. One second here. No. Okay. Thank you. So this subject property is located in Western Malibu. It's about 15.9 acres in size. The lot is partially within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Postal Commission. However, the proposed scope is not within the appeal zone. Majority of this property is also within identified environmentally sensitive habitat area, and there is a stream that runs through the property, and then outside the property boundaries. The proposed development is in the southeast corner there, and it is outside the appeal zone, but also approximately 200 feet away from the Blue Line stream that runs through the property. The proposed scope of work is a conversion of an existing 898 square foot accessory structure yoga studio to a second unit. There's a new swimming pool, spa proposed, permeable pool deck, and an onsite wastewater treatment system that will service the second unit. Here's a partial site plan of the newly developed area being proposed. The accessory structure, as previously mentioned, was a permitted structure that was rebuilt as part of the planning verification, and there's no structural components to this project. It is simply adding a kitchen and some bedrooms to make it a second unit. The new site development for this project includes a new pool deck, a new pool, and some new DNG walk areas, and some areas next to the proposed deck. Here is a existing and proposed floor plan of the current yoga studio that's proposed to be turned into a second unit. As mentioned, there's a kitchen being added to that structure, a bathroom, and two bedrooms. And then lastly, in elevation, there is an existing rooftop deck that is not being added to this project that was previously existing as part of the rebuild under the planning verification. And as mentioned previously, there's no structural modifications to the exterior of the second unit. There was one typo in the staff report we wanted to address. We got correspondence today from a neighbor who lives at three one nine oh five PCH, and they reported to us that their, the size of their lot was incorrect, and they were, they were right. So point eight nine acres is actually 3.4 acres. We also noticed that the neighbor at three one seven six seven PCH was also noted wrong, and that the true acreage is about 1.2 acres. So with that, staff recommends approval of the project as conditioned. We're available for any questions.
Do we have any questions for, of staff?
Disclosures?
Oh, I'm sorry, disclosures?
I had a phone call last week with the applicant's representative, and also over the weekend, just discussing the, the project, and trying to coordinate a time to get out there, but I was not able to get out there.
I talked to Mr. He Cox on the phone. Didn't learn anything different with some staff report.
I got a couple of phone messages from Mr. He Cox. I replied with email. Basically, I had not really many questions, except ones that we could talk about with staff and the commission here. I also visited the site with John. We met with the blacks. We had some discussion about the exterior stairs, but on reflection, realized, remembered, and Mr. He Cox also pointed out, that TDSF measures interior space, so that those stairs were not an issue with regard to the overall area of the second unit. Saw that the, that the deck area where the pool would go is currently permeable, and I noticed, just as an aside, this is the second project we've seen recently that referred to D and G, when in fact, it's decomposed granite. And I don't know why some people are suddenly using that. Maybe I just noticed it. Anyway, those are my disclosures.
Okay, I went out with Craig Friday. We toured the property. It's basically a completed building. Talked to the blacks, and the only thing that wasn't in the staff report that I noticed was that there's a built-in airstream with deck adjacent to the, to the building, which I, I don't know. which I don't know whether that was part of Woolsey or not, but as I understand, there's a completion of the Woolsey file. And that's it. Do we, do we have any questions of staff?
I have some housekeeping things, but let's save them for the end in case they're not relevant.
Do we have, do we have any speakers other than the presenter, the applicant?
We have the applicant, Lynn He Cox.
And nobody else?
No other public speakers.
I'm gonna open the public hearing, and Lynn, you're on. You've got 15 minutes. You can reserve, well, you can reserve any time you want, but there is nobody to rebut at this point.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I thank you, Tyler Offage, for your presentation. Commissioners, during your discussion, I have not heard any opposition to the recommendations of whether it's grading, permeability, square footage. I'd like to reserve my rebuttal time just to discuss the project with the Commissioners. If you've got a problem, please explain it to me, because I've tried to explain to everybody else. Any questions that they've had, I've been more than willing to try to address those questions in a way that I believe they exist, and I'd be happy to do that now. Other than that, I don't have any further questions, because I've sent emails to everybody regarding square footage, two bedrooms, existing proposed kitchen. I've discussed permeability, which is a very important issue for low flow water flows and for water quality. We do have permeability beyond 33,000, we have 33,000 feet of impermeable area. But just to reinforce everybody, we've had three projects here. We had a fire rebuild for the main house. That was approved with the existing driveway. But under the exemptions, the fire department, excuse me, under the coastal commission exemptions, when you're rebuilding, they have to bring projects up to code, building codes. The fire department required us to put in a fire truck turnaround for that main house. They did the same thing with the studio building. That was a second exemption. We had to put in a fire truck turnaround for the studio building. Today, we're not proposing any additional impermeable areas. And that's, we don't have anything. In the future, if we were to put up today another 1,000 square foot building or in addition to the house, we would have to do an offset, because we're capped at that 33,000. We can't put in more no matter what. We can add 2,000 square feet to the house, we would have to find an offset of 2,000 square feet. Same thing on square footage. We were allowed a total development square footage of 11,172. If we were going to exceed that, we would have to tear down parts of the house. Right now, we're well under the maximum allowable square footage. We currently meet the requirements for our current projects under permeable qualities. And if you've got any questions, I'd like to redress them, and so I'll reserve my rebuttal time for that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Okay, Lynn, before I close. Lynn, before I close the hearing, once we close the hearing, you won't have rebuttal time, but we will be able to ask you questions and you can answer those. So we're now closing the public hearing. Okay, Commissioners.
Okay, well, why don't I start? Okay, I understand that the 33.6 thousand square feet of impermeable is grandfathered. I get that. What I don't see here is that, it seems like, doesn't seem like, we are talking about increasing the impermeable, because pools are not permeable. They're impermeable, and they would be inserting it in a place that is currently permeable. It's a small thing, it's only about 160 square feet, but this becomes a matter of precedent and policy. And I can talk about why it's necessarily permeable. But it seems to me, before we do that, I would just say that it seems like the solution here, absent any other critical issues about the property that anybody might have, would be to either process that as the increase in impermeable area as a variance, or else put in a condition requiring that 160 square feet somewhere else that's currently impermeable would be converted to permeable on sort of a like-for-like and, you know, perhaps native plantings put in or something along those lines. And I'll just say, I know, I know the, a couple of years ago, I know for a while, the policy had been that a pool is considered permeable. But a couple of years ago, we had one that Richard said, he agreed, you agreed, and said, no, actually, a pool is impermeable. And I was trying to remember where that was. For some reason, I thought it was on Zoomiraz or maybe Wildlife. In my brief time to try to look it up, I did come across the meeting, the minutes of March 6, 2023, in which you did note, and I don't know if this was the case I'm thinking of, I don't think it is even, but you noted that Public Works Department includes pools in their impermeable calculations in order to verify proper site drainage. That's a quote from the meeting minutes. And that makes sense, because if you get, you know, two inches of rain in an hour or two, most pools are gonna overflow and produce runoff. Plus, the impermeable bottom of the pool restricts rain input to groundwater, which may have an ecological effect. So we, my understanding is that we were calling them permeable. We're now more recently calling them impermeable, which they are in fact. So I see a shaking head down there. Are you not understanding what I'm saying, or are you disagreeing with me?
The audience doesn't matter.
No, no.
Okay.
Anyway, Richard, maybe you could enlighten us on how we're supposed to handle this and whether it would be simple enough to just say, let's just make a condition of 160 square feet converted to permeable, to permeable somewhere else.
I'd like to ask Mr. Don, get a quick question before we do that, and that is, Craig has given us two options here. One is a condition saying 160 square feet has to be replaced somewhere else. The other is a, is a.
Variance.
Variance, and that requires findings and everything else. Could we do the 160 without having to do the variance?
If the, if the request is to, you can, will you guys, can you guys condition this, the proposal?
Yeah.
If that is the, and once again, I assume, I don't wanna put words into Commissioner Hill's mouth, that we are going to approve, the motion would be to approve this with the caveat that they must, you know, install 160, whatever the exact square footage of permeable somewhere else. That would seem to fall in line between the project and the required findings. So I would not, you know, object to that.
So, but the variance, we'd have to continue and do all kinds of stuff, right?
Correct, there's variance, not before you.
So, yes, many moons ago, I explained the difference between how planning and public works treats pools. We have not changed our stance in the planning department. The public works department does consider them to be impermeable surfaces when they're looking at grading and drainage. However, we have not looked to reconsider that or reevaluate it. We, I believe, if I, I was trying to pull up one of our handouts. I believe our handout might still identify pools as permeable surfaces, if I'm not mistaken. So we have not changed that now. Ultimately, it is the decision of this commission. If the will of the commission is to treat it that way on this project, that is within your purview to do.
My recollection is that, I don't know, two years or so ago, we did treat one as impermeable. Do you not remember that? I know there's a lot of water under the bridge, as it were.
That might have been water over an infinity edge, because I, if it's, I thought there was one with an infinity edge, and our public works department explained that because it was a rim flow pool, I believe that's the appropriate term, that any water on it would essentially spread out onto the deck. But that, once again, this situation, when this commission looks at it, and our assistant attorney can add on to what I'm saying if needed, if this commission feels that in order to make the findings, given the circumstances of the property and the conditions here, that there is a concern, that that is, like I mentioned, within your purview.
Okay, Richard, a question. Why would the public works department has to come to you to get a CDP, come to the planning? So how could they have a different interpretation? It's your department that interprets, right?
They are looking at this from an engineering perspective, and they are not the ones tasked with implementing the city's LIP in Chapter 17. Obviously, they do participate in it, but they are explaining to me that from an engineering standpoint, they've, they have that practice. Their practice is definitely more restrictive. However, I don't believe there is a conflict with the city. Our zoning ordinance is, should another department do that?
I have a question, and that is, there's a fully developed airstream with a deck around it 30 feet from this building. Now, I assume that, and I don't know who could answer this, I assume that they probably got an airstream exemption for, they were one of the 12 that got them for building the house under Woolsey Fire. But the way I read, and unfortunately, I forgot my notes tonight, but I think it's Section 17040040A8. Basically says, the minute you finish your house, it's gotta go. Or there's like a hundred dollar fine a day, et cetera. So is there anything in this resolution that would address that?
Was the airstream just parked there, or what, did you see hookups?
Well, it's all built out. Okay, it's not parked there. You cannot drive it away, I'll put it that way. So I should have had my thing on. So that's, and so what I'm, I'm wondering if it's not in the resolution, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, and I'm gonna see if the applicant has any objection to it. And that is that make a motion to adopt this resolution with the addition of the, and I don't know how you'd wanna say it, Craig, the 160 square feet of impermeable coverage must be replaced in the 30, whatever, thousand square feet of impermeable at another location. Is that good enough for a resolution?
Sure, yes, and so just, just to be sure, so I'm, I mean, I understand the intent is, whatever square footage that has the pool must be, must have somewhere else on the property permeable surface installed.
Right. And that's, we gotta remember that that is probably 0.000001 percent. Okay, but whatever. Well, I'm gonna ask him on both two things. The other, the other thing on the resolution before it gets seconded is I wanna put in a provision that the, and I hope Richard can check this for me, Municipal Code Section 17040040A8. And that is the section that deals with mobile trailers, I don't know what you call them.
I have it pulled up here if there's something specifically.
Is that right? No, I just wanna know, make sure the number is right.
The actual number?
Yeah, and so, so I'm gonna ask Lynn, are you on, still on the line? Can you unmute him?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, are those acceptable provisions for you to pass this?
I have one more.
Couple of comments.
Well, I wanna know, yes or no?
A yes is fine for the, a yes is fine for the offset. We can certainly find some additional areas for, to make impermeable areas permeable. And the engineers, basically, in the public works are mostly detailing high water flows, peak flows.
No, 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 we're not, we're not in anything other than a question to you. We don't need analysis. You would accept that 160, or whatever, approximately 160 square feet of offset.
Yes, I agree to that.
Okay, and you'll accept following 17040040A8?
I will, I will look into this and reply back to enforcement specifically with my correspondence, because I've never seen the trailer there or a motor home. I don't know what it's being used for.
Well, Lynn, that's not my question. My question is, if there's a trailer there and it's being used against the provisions of this section, this, this, this resolution is gonna say you must follow that section.
I'd like to make an amendment.
I agree to that.
You can agree to that, okay?
I've got more too, John.
I'd like to just make a secondary amendment that we just have either planning or code enforcement verify that the, the trailer is in compliance with local codes.
Well, that's, that's what's gonna happen. They have to sign off on this CDP. When they sign off on the CDP, they just have to make sure it's in local codes.
I can give some code on this if you will.
Well, I don't want anything other than the number. Is that the number?
Well, it's, yeah, it's 17404018, and then there's a bunch of sections to that, within that. And just to say, this is relevant to disaster, and you get it for an initial period of four years.
No, we don't need to know that. This, I wanna make clear that this is only to emphasize that you must follow that code.
Yeah, can I say?
And that code exists, we're not creating that code or changing it.
Yes, okay, Senior Planner Eaton. So while 160 square feet isn't much, 10 by 16, is this a number that's gonna bite them later on something else with the house? And while it's not that much, thinking in the future, when the planning department says, we don't have to do this, I'm asking you, is this something that later will get them and they'll have, they'll be in a, in a bind for 160 feet?
From my, looking at the plans today, there are a couple of areas that are just, I would say arbitrary areas. The driveway, obviously, you don't wanna take from that, because it was improved to meet the fire department requirements. And there is a couple of turnaround areas that they're gonna have to see if, you know, basically, I guess what I'm saying is they can't deduct the space from anywhere that the fire department is requiring access. So there is some cement area in this general area of the 80, of the second unit. So that, that could be 50 to 100 square feet right there, that could probably go and just replace it with DG.
To be clear, oh, I'm sorry.
There's probably some spots near the house that can probably also go.
Okay, to be clear, the limit is 25,000, they're already at 33.6, so they're over. And the point is to say, yeah, that much is grandfathered, but we don't wanna just be giving them yet more beyond what you're allowed.
And the other point is, it's the whole property, okay? It's not just this little spot. It's 15.9 acres. They have to find 160 square feet.
And they may.
Which is maybe a quarter of an inch along the road?
They may like to start a new organic vegetable garden, right? I mean, that would be.
So anyway, I just wanna put in proportion. I'd like to get this, the reason I'm doing this, I just wanna get it done. And I think it's de minimis, and so.
I have one other potential.
You have what, you have a?
One other potential condition we should discuss. The rooftop deck. To be clear, this, unlike many that we hear, does not appear to present any privacy issues, a lot of the ones we run into. This is pretty isolated. But, but the top of the railing is already at 18 feet 8 inches. So in the past, we've had conditions where we have said, we don't wanna leave tall furniture out above the height of that overnight or whatever. Would there be an appetite here to say, let's just let furniture up to the height of the railing, but we don't wanna have tall umbrellas, or, I mean, I'm thinking about precedent, right?
Well, I don't, I, in my opinion, you're never gonna have anybody, you can't subdivide that lot to the point at which anybody's ever gonna see him.
I'm sorry, okay, Tyler.
So because of, this has been an issue in the past.
Yeah.
We have a condition added to this project, Condition 61, that basically says, no furniture can be left overnight on top of the roof.
Done.
The tall stuff. I mean, you could leave furniture up, but just not the tall.
No, overnight.
It says no furniture overnight. If you want us to be more specific, we can, we can edit that. It was a general standard based on some issues that we've got on previous projects.
Okay, because it's already. Okay, because it's already in there, I'm not gonna accept it.
Okay. I mean, it's consistent, nobody's gonna see if they put a couch up there anyway.
Okay, can, can we, is there any other motion? If not, let's take a vote.
Hang on, hang on. A little bit of housekeeping.
Yep.
A little bit of housekeeping. Just, I don't know, and Patrick, you can tell us whether any of this is relevant because it's mainly in the staff report, not the resolution. But the cover sheet on the plans shows the permissible TDSF as being 10,000 square feet. That's not true. It's 11,172. And so I wondered, the 10,000 square foot would pertain to a development area if it were in ESHA. And so my question, refresh my memory, do we, how much of a project needs to be in ESHA for the 10,000 square foot limit to apply? Does it have to be completely surrounded by ESHA, or just one little corner in ESHA? Or how does that work?
It has to do with impact. If there is an impact to ESHA, then it would qualify. So for example, if your house is outside of ESHA, but your fuel modification impedes upon ESHA, then that would require that we apply the 10,000 square foot.
Any amount triggers it. So, I mean, I'm not saying it triggers it here, but they just have references to a 10,000 number there, and if that's not in the resolution, then it probably doesn't matter. And then finally, the cover sheet also, the application refers to various City of Los Angeles Building Codes 2017. I don't think we wanna be approving something that's, can we, we just call that a typo, right?
It's the county of LA we adopt, not the city, right?
Yes, and I think regardless, and Pat can speak to this, regardless of what that may say, when they submit to plan check, they're gonna need to meet the most current California Building Code. There's no sort of non-conforming protection this body can give them with the Building Code.
Okay. I thought it was a non-issue, but I figured I'd check.
Can we have a vote?
Hang on, hang on. At least, I'm, I'm a bit unclear on the, on the motion and the, and the person who seconded it. So unless Ms. Evans?
I made the motion, Craig seconded it.
Okay, so the first, the added condition is, and Tyler, correct me, 161 square feet? Is that what it is?
I thought the one you said where the size, equal to the size of the pool was better, so we can verify that.
Yeah, in case they.
Okay, okay. So permeable surface equal to or greater than the size of the pool shall be installed on the, is installed the correct vernacular?
Created.
Yeah, created, planted, whatever, the right.
I think Commissioner Hill wanted to be more specific, was, whose motion was it? Because you said you wanted natives, right?
That was just a hypothesis, that's not required.
So just permeable area is okay?
I don't know that we could just require natives out of thin air, you know what I mean?
This is, this is the size of your kitchen table.
So just replace with permeable area, right?
And hopefully, they'll make a garden or something.
Does that work, Pat?
Yes, okay, so permeable surface equal to or greater than the square footage of the pool shall be required onsite.
Right. And then you have the other one, right? You have the right number on that.
And so, I did wanna drill down to that. Director, did you wanna start, or?
If I may, so, Commission, my staff, the, our fire rebuild planner did visit the site. And when he visited the site, he did not observe the airstream on the site. So I'm afraid this might be something that's a bit more current. And that being the case, I would prefer that we don't give them the opportunity to apply for temporary housing. In general, you are allowed to store trailers on your property. However, the minute that they become permanent with the foundation, or you hook them up to some sort of utility, you know, electrical, water, gas, your septic system, that is a violation. And so if it would be amenable to the Planning Commission, because as I mentioned, I don't wanna encourage temporary housing permits if they don't need one, if it would be amenable to the Planning Commission that the, we put a condition, something to the effect that staff shall conduct a site visit to identify the condition, does that sound about right, Pat? The condition of the trailer, and if the trailer is hooked up to any utilities, those should be immediately disconnected, and either a permit shall be sought.
I mean, so I.
If possible.
I'm not even sure that we need to go down that, that hypothetical, simply if it's the will of the commission, staff shall conduct a site visit to identify the condition and use of any trailer on the property, and ensure compliance with the MMC and LIP.
No, it's not acceptable, because that is a one-time shot. They, the purpose of the amendment is, they must follow 174040 forever.
No, of course.
Including today.
So, so by no means was my condition meant to reflect, as long as they're in compliance in that one day, then the city has to.
But all this stuff about being hooked up and everything else is in that code section, okay? And there's a fine if you don't do it. And so it's mind-boggling to me to make an editorial statement that planning commissioners go out to a site for approval and find a fully developed airstream with a, with a deck around it, okay? So this, all I'm trying to do, and this, this motion is, say, just like we do everywhere else, you shall not, you shall follow the LIP, you shall, you shall follow this, you shall follow that.
Sure, and so I just wanna, you know, if I made sure.
Okay.
So the, that hundred dollar per day fine for which you posit in 18.
I don't wanna charge that fine. I just wanna.
Right, but.
It's up to compliance.
I just wanna give you the context of it. That deals with the expiration of a temporary housing permit, in that if your temporary housing permit expires, and you do not remove all of those structures from the property and get verification for which you have done so, then it will result in a fine of a hundred dollars per day. And so what I'm hearing from Director is that, do they have a temporary housing permit on the, on the property?
Tyler, can you confirm? Because I'm not aware of one there.
I don't think so. Let me confirm with the monitor real quick.
Yeah, but what I'm, and I know we're splitting hairs here, but they either had it under Woolsey Fire, or they didn't. They either put it in afterwards, or they didn't. It doesn't matter. This Section 14 covers all bases. If they aren't hooked up to a utility, if they aren't this, if they aren't that, they can store a trailer. Now, as far as I'm concerned, you're not storing a trailer when you build a, a deck around it, so you can't tow it away. You know, but that's up to, that's up to the code officer. I just wanna make sure, since our staff missed a trailer, which is not a bit, easy thing to miss, or hard thing to miss, that we actually are on top of it, and we follow, they have to follow the rules. That's all.
I would ask if anyone has evidence that it was there when this, if the, you have evidence that it was there when the planner visited the site? Because the planner is telling me it was not. I'll follow up with the planner, but there's a good possibility.
When the planner visits sites, I assume that, well, I don't care. I'm not trying to beat on staff. All I wanna do is put something in here saying, obviously, something's gotta be followed that is in the code. Follow it.
But the Director gave you that already. He told you that, that he would do that. We don't have to say it. They'll go look at it.
Okay, well, that's, I'm gonna call a vote. I'm not gonna change my motion if you wanted to not put in a code section that's been written for 20 years. Vote against it.
And so Chair, just to be sure, so the condition would simply say, the property owner is required to comply with Section 1740?
Whatever that.
Hang on, I wanna make sure, because I was a bit confused.
Well, this is coming out of my head, because I left my notes.
Yeah, A18, that is the temporary housing.
Well, I want the mobile home section. You put 144040, then, leave off all the other stuff.
Okay, so just 17.40.040?
That's all you need, right? It covers everything under 1440.
Sure, I would, I would say that we, that that code section applies regardless, but if it, if it gives the, the commission less hard burn, I'm not gonna stand in the way and say.
Okay. Okay, so can we call a question?
And so, I make sure, so Commissioner Hill, is that, are you, is that consistent with your second?
Yeah, it's the same difference to me.
Okay, so just, Tyler, are you, are you good with the, with the condition? Or do you need me to say them again?
I would just point out that it's, the last digit is 18, the temporary housing section.
Well, we're gonna do the whole section, and that way, we don't have to worry about that. Forget that. So it's 1440040.
Well, that's development standards generally, the whole.
Okay, well, they have to follow the development standards.
Correct.
Mr. Donley, would you please read this one more time for me, please? I'm sorry to do that to you.
Sure, nope, not a problem. So as I understand it, the motion is staff recommendation with two added conditions. The first one being permeable surface equal to or greater than the square footage of the pool shall be installed on the property. The second one is.
Well, no, it's.
Installed, I apologize. Is there, is there a better word that someone can educate me on to, for?
When, when you stated this previously, you ended it with shall be required onsite?
Required onsite, perfect. Shall be required onsite. Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. And the second one is, property owner shall comply with Section 17.40.040 of the Malibu Municipal Code.
Okay. May we have a roll call?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was trying to just make sure I had captured all of that. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
God, there's just nothing to talk about, about this, but we seem to. Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, hopefully, we don't need a break to do the last one. Okay, we're off to Item 5B, which is coastal. I'm sorry, we're off to Item 5B, Coastal Development Permit Number 21-038, a follow-up application for emergency foundation, repair and existing garage, to an existing garage. The applicant, we have, well, we have a staff report, please. Oh, no, first, let's have disclosure.
None. I asked Planner Allen about why we, the geotechnical coastal engineering review sheets are just the cover sheet, and he said that's all that was needed, and I wondered about that. It seems like we should have at least a couple pages of discussion on those, but we'll see where we're going here.
Okay, Drew?
None.
None. Sorry about that. I'm not used to being chairman for a while. Can you give us a staff report and give us a comment on Craig's, Craig's question?
Sure. Good evening, Chair Mazza, members of the Planning Commission. Let me, I guess, first respond to Craig. The comments on the geotechnical and coastal engineering review sheets are just located on the bottom of their referral page, so it's just a, like a paragraph, and that's all that we have for those two reviews. So, so it should be, it should be visible in the, in the attachment for the department reviews.
If that's what it is, then that's what it is. Usually, usually, there's a little bit more than that, so.
Yeah. So, okay, the item for you tonight is really a follow-up CDP to an emergency CDP that we issued three years ago. This property is located 22234 Pacific Coast Highway. This slide shows, it's just east of, you know, the Malibu Sands Shopping Center, and it's located beachfront. This image shows the, still under construction, large house to the east of the subject property. Go to the next slide here. So here's the site plan, within the dotted box there. This, this box covers two properties, the subject property is to the left, and within that, you'll see a sliver of a dashed rectangle there. That's the area of, of the work, which is remedial repair to the foundation of the existing detached garage. So it's not a lot of area, but it's, that's, that's what's shown there. And then you could see the footprints of the structures, you know, to, to the east as well. And then, let's look at the next slide. Actually, before I go to the next slide, you can see that this residence to the east was three lots previously, it's been merged into one. This is a close-up of the site plan. To the right, you'll see just, just a close-up of that portion of the garage foundation that I mentioned. And this just shows some cross-sections as well of the, of the work that was done. So, yeah, this is a short presentation, but staff recommendation is to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2436, approving CDP permit number 2138. Any questions?
Real quick question, why isn't the other property, did the other property cause this to happen, correct?
Correct. So the way this application came in, I believe it was early 2021, and I think the fall before that, there were, there were settling observed in the, that foundation area due to shoring that was installed to construct the residence to the east. So, yeah, it was due to shoring that was, you know, kind of made it vulnerable to.
So, and this seems like a stupid question, but why wouldn't the people put the shoring have to do something?
Maybe they did.
Do they, do they have to get an emergency permit to fix their shoring?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, that's a dumb question. I don't.
That was all part of the building of the house.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other questions, staff? Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and we have the applicant here. He has a short presentation. It's Greg Olekry, and Greg Suthard? Sorry about the last names.
Good evening. I'm Greg Studhite with Montalba Architects, and we are the applicant. I don't actually have much to say. I can obviously answer questions if there are some. I did want, though, before you approve this motion, to just point out one or two quick things. As Fletcher explained, this was tied to an emergency application that was approved, and the work was done several years ago. The current resolution that's before you contains a couple of, I think, what are basically boilerplate requirements, that I don't believe we're gonna be able to meet, just because the work has been done for quite some time now. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, so that it doesn't cause other issues later down the road.
Is Fletcher aware of what you're talking about?
No, we just received this fairly recently, so we haven't had a chance.
Okay, could you explain it to him, so we can determine whether we have to do anything?
Sure, right now?
Just tell him which provisions you can't meet.
So Provision Number 19 is, when framing is complete, a site survey must be completed. There wasn't any framing involved in the repair. It was all underground work. And then Number 22, prior to a final building inspection, the applicant shall provide recycled summer report. This hadn't been a requirement of the initial, and since it's been completed now for so long, I'm not sure we can get documentation of that.
Okay, and any questions of the applicants? Okay, yes, go ahead.
What year was the work completed, again?
It was in 2021.
Did we require recycling reports in 2021?
Yes, we've required them for a good period of time, actually. I would say that if you are considering some sort of modification to Number 22, perhaps just say, at the determination of the building official, because this is something that falls under ESD, and I do wanna respect the wishes of the city's building officials, so I think if the commission's amenable to that.
The first thing they talked about, you can just eliminate that, since there was no wood?
That is correct. That is correct. That one I can do. Framing, yes, that's.
Okay. So unless there's any, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick aside that, driving by the, the property to the east, the big, the three parcel property, at a glance, I thought I saw that the fence, the gate on the, the view corridor is maybe too high and not view permeable enough. I, I didn't look at it closely. I just thought I'd mention it now because we're here and we've talked about that property. I will try to look at it more closely in the near future, and if there's a problem, I'll report it to, to, I don't know.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this project.
Wait, wait, I want to be sure.
There were no raised hands.
And so no other speakers left? Okay. Okay, got it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this as staff recommends with the elimination of the.
Number 19.
19, the wood, and Richard's language on the reporting to staff.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Before I make a motion to dismiss, I just wanted to remind Richard that you never tell a woman she's getting up there. I make a motion to, to close the agenda. I mean, to adjourn.
To adjourn the meeting, yeah.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Not until we hear what that was about.
I have a question, John.
Hang on. Meeting's adjourned. The meeting is adjourned.